Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 11th, 2011. Tonight, City Council is meeting in a special session with its normal special session abbreviated agenda, and then we will go into a series of four committee meetings. We do have a quorum with six of seven council members present. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 2611 is an ordinance authorizing construction of the Mill Street Sewer Replacement, project number 252. Member Bain.
I move adoption of 2611.
Second.
2611 is going to be as authorizing construction of the Mill Street Sewer project. We did go and see it the other day. It includes a sewer line especially, a street replacement, getting rid of the speed bumps, human-made ones, and sidewalks. And it's going to be a project that will probably take a good bit of the summer. And we're using community development block grant funds for two years, about a third of a million dollars out of the sewer fund, and roughly, and I'm talking in rough terms, roughly a hundred thousand out of the street fund. And that's what we have in 2611.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Mayor Wile.
I will point out, like any street construction, most of the cost is in the infrastructure underneath, okay? But we'll end up, and we're doing assessments on the sidewalks, as you know, as in train.
Putting that coat of asphalt on it is not a big deal compared to the engineering of the pipe.
You betcha.
All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 2611 has been adopted. Ordinance 2711 is an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer. Again, member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 2711.
Second.
Okay, 2711 is an ordinance that has several parts. One part is putting the money in the fund to pay for extra police officers, not our own outside people coming in for the various fests. I'd like to point out that it's a very expensive proposition when we add our own people to this cost. Fun is fun, but in a few minutes, we're going to be talking about a fire truck. And, you know, twenty thousand won't pay for the fire truck, but maybe semesters will solve this problem. I don't know. That's section one. I better not go any further afield. Section two, we're going to put 200,000 in an involving loan fund to be used, to be borrowed by UHRC. We were down at the site yesterday, Saturday, looking at it, and this is money to be used to complete that project. We'll have it paid back, and we'll have money, you will have money to spend at some future date. We have to get money out of our TIF fund to cover the school share and the auditor's fee. Probably, there's a lot of money moving around in this one, and then the movement into the TIF for transfer. And then the water fund, last thing, in section two, we're taking money, water fund for transfer, which we'll see below. Water Improvement Fund is the recipient of that in section three. So that, I believe, is almost everything on here. It's been so long since we've started this, I forgot what was in here. But the big one is one, section one, where we're putting 20,000 dollars up for extra people in connection with the fests.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 27? Again, Mayor Wile. Well, Service Safety Director Mosley.
There was just one additional, and that was the $360,000 for the Community Center Fund for the Perfection Energy Improvements. Forgot.
Yeah. It comes out of a fund that can only be used for that.
As part of the bond.
All those in favor of ordinance 2711?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 2911 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $60,000 of water system revenue notes, 14th renewal by the City of Athens, Ohio, for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued for the purpose of financing certain litigation costs. Member Sands is not with us tonight. Member Bain, would you speak to the ordinance?
I move adoption of 2911.
Second.
2911 is, we hope, our last borrow on, to be paid back by the dollar fee each of us pay on the water bill. We have the EPA litigation fund, and that's what this is going to be paying off, we hope. Next year, 60,000 is all we'll be borrowing, we'll be paying interest on it, and hopefully the hundred, the dollar each month will take care of it. In 2911, we'll end our experience with that. And with a little bit of luck, we might not have to do this again. So those people who complained about having those extra charges on the bill, it's almost over. There it is.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 2911? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3011 is an ordinance adopting green building design standards for the municipal, let me redo that. Ordinance 3011, an ordinance adopting green building design standards for municipal property. Member Gosman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 3011.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance is part of our ongoing effort to care for our environment in terms of city operations and city energy use. This would require new city construction or major renovations to meet certain internationally-recognized green building design standards. Those standards are, come from the US Green Building Council, and look at a number of different factors in the building design and construction that include energy conservation of the building, the intensity of energy use, water use, so that it's efficient in the water that's used in the building, also promotion of a healthy environment, so the materials used in construction are, create a healthy air environment for the occupants, and there are a number of other categories that are included in these standards. The requirement would be to meet silver level of LEED certification. LEED is, stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, and it's a pretty widespread used guideline that cities and private companies use when doing sustainable or green construction.
Do we have further discussion on ordinance 30? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We move on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 3111 is an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Ordinance 3211 is an ordinance authorizing a contract extension of the city's third-party health insurance administrator and declaring an emergency. Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to consider 3211 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
3211 needs a suspension because the rollover date is the 15th, and so we will be seeing that on Friday, so that's why this will be suspended, if you agree.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules for 3211?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Move adoption of 3211.
Second.
Speak to the ordinance?
Oh, I thought we already have, okay. We talked about it last week, right? Seems like just yesterday. Oh, it was a week ago. Okay, we have, self-insured, and we have several components that are part of our insurance costs. One part is the third-party administrator, which we are contracting with for a year, given the fact that things seem to be in quite a bit of flux at this point in time. So I think Mr. Sands and I, Sherry, decided that we would recommend going for a year only. The difference would be 4,000 potential extra costs versus having to go an extra year, $90,000 extra cost. So seemed prudent to go with this, but who knows what's happening in this. I do have one thing to say when we get to committees about drugs, but this is only for the major medical, and this one is doing better than it did a few years ago.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 32? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 3311 is an ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance. That is the last item on our, Mayor Wile.
I was in the impression we need to suspend this. I'm trying to remember why.
Reckless.
Reckless and the school share, I think, for University Courtyard, and the energy improvements for perfection, I think.
Okay. That was introduced by Member Sands, so in his absence, could I ask Member Coon to speak to this?
I move to consider 3311 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Reason for suspension?
Because we need to take care of these things.
We have bills already for some of the perfection improvements and our consultants for the record closure.
Yeah. Okay. Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 33?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
I move to adopt ordinance 3311.
Second.
And I, could we go, I don't have that in front of me, it's closing.
We could let the mayor speak to this.
Okay, this is basically amending the appropriation ordinance 12010. The first section has appropriations amended by appropriate balance following some, 32,000 to the general fund for other administrative TC 300. This is the school share for University Courtyard payments. Otherwise, we just got the courtyard payments from the university, that gets loaned on to, passed on to the school, which of course has been waiting for some of that, and we did put some money aside of that, but not enough, obviously. I think that's.
They paid two years. They paid 2010 and 2011. They paid early, so we didn't appropriate the entire two years at the beginning of the year.
Okay, the next one is 44,000, for capital improvements for the Perfection Energy Group, and we actually received a.
An invoice.
An invoice for some of the work they started. We've been sitting on that till the contract was signed, actually, so we want to get that rolling. The next one is 18,000 for the parking garage for perfection. This is, of course, coming out of the parking garage fund, 3730 TC 500, and we had the money in that fund. The next one after that is 20,000 from the award administration fund, 740 636 300, this is for the Rickola well closing, and just, you know what that's all about, so that's really why we're trying to get these things rolling.
Yes, thank you.
Is there suspension on it? Will it be adopted?
Adopted.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 3311 has been adopted. That is the last item on our agenda. Having addressed all items on the special session agenda, special session is adjourned. We move on to the City Services Committee. Committee Chair, Member Bain.
All right, so you should have in front of you O-blank 11, which is potentially the licensure movement to the actual agenda next week, which is the goal. And in both ways, we have some of the materials that are there, potentially, the service director said she, do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Well, luckily, I have some extra.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can have it.
Okay, all right. So here we have, it's good to know.
Thank you.
What we've done, this is amending an earlier ordinance, September 1, 1986, a long time ago, 25 years ago, my goodness. And so at that point, and just to contextualize it a little bit, we were going out of the business almost exclusively, the garbage business and contracting. There were issues at that point with, and I'm not going to go through the whole history, but a lot of people weren't paying their garbage. No, it's garbage after all, I'll throw it in someone else's can was the mentality. So we made sure everybody pays garbage, and I think to some large extent, that's going on, although we've kept our fees very low. Anybody who's familiar with garbage recycling and other places, and I would point to Knox County, is probably 25 dollars a month as opposed to our slightly half of that amount. And it's because we have been working on recycling in the, on the residential side. At that point, in September, on September 1, 1986, there were five private mom-and-pop type of garbage operations in town, and we didn't want to put them out of business, we just said, you can have all of the commercial business, so we created a license to pick up garbage. There weren't many controls on it, all you had to do was pay your license fee every year, and it was a license, I guess you could almost say, to make money, which I think probably you could have done, support five families from it, but it wasn't long before, as you might imagine, the big guys came along and kind of took, bought them out and took them over, not surprisingly. Well, now, we're in a totally different world, and last year, we put through an ordinance saying that we intended to change, and the service safety director expressed the opinion she wanted to continue with the license thing. I have no huge opinion on it either way. I was hoping the contract would be tighter, because we've had some examples of fumbles, which you'll see, and I tried, we tried to put some things in to remedy the fumbled problem. I mean, people not paying their license and not detecting it for a while, and things like that, I'd call that a fumble. And so now, we're going to put the onus on them and let them take care of it. And this was not on the watch, I mean, it's not something that you're going to blame anybody for, it just happened. In addition to that historical episode, we also have the EPA saying, all right, we want commercial pickup of recyclables, and we have a pay-as-you-throw program, and there's just almost no way to work around it, so this is the beginning way we came up with. So we're trying to expand a pay-as-you-throw approach to this, and I would state that the new reality, which would be maybe more mixed materials on the commercial side at least, will not be in place, at least as I understand it, until 2016. So there will not be a facility that can handle mixed materials until 2016. I believe the service director heard that too, isn't that right?
The Zero Waste Initiative, people would like to see it probably in the next two years, but my understanding from the county level is it's going to take that long, if we're going to have that.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we have is a solid waste district under House Bill 592, and that's the reality we generally operate in. The mayor and I are both on that, on the planning committee. I'm a, I don't represent the City of Athens, I'm a citizen. Okay, so one thing we're, and there were things in the old ordinance that were never enforced, and at that point, I mean, implementation is everything. I think I've said that before. Okay, so the terms of the license, we put the number at four, and shall be reduced with any non-renewal emerging of commercial haulers. Now, you can change that, if you think it's desirable to have more trucks rolling the streets, but it's possible you might not want to do that. To avoid our little pitfalls, we're going to have our licenses renewed automatically each year for a period of three years, in keeping with what Mr. Rumke representative said to us, he thought more than two years was necessary. And you're going, you state you're going to renew the license by coming in and paying your fees by June 15th. Ta-da, there it is. We don't have to go running after you and tell you to do it. If you're not here on the 15th of June, guess what? You're not renewed. That's going to be the way, we avoid that mistake that happened a couple times. Failure to submit the annual fees as stipulated above, affair to submit an annual report, referenced below, shall signal the forfeiture of the license for the remainder of the licensing period. The application for the license and the payment of fees for 2011 must be completed by 1 July. And then hereafter, you've got a different time. But the next thing is probably going to be not very popular. In the process of dealing with the fumble with a non-renewed license, I believe the service director had an eye-opening experience, which is, we should probably be charging a little bit more for our, the privilege of picking up garbage in town. So what we're going to do is have each license pay a fixed amount, $5,000, plus 25 for each cubic yard of pack of capacity, and the variable cost according to the ordinance will increase annually at a rate of eight percent over the three-year period. Now, we're not controlling the prices, and one of the things that really worries me, and it's something that we've not been able to control, is that I think there's great variability from haul to hauler and from place to place in town. But, you know, absent a large cadre of people to enforce it, it's not going to happen in this lifetime, so what we can do is ask them, as you'll see at an end, what they're doing. Now, one thing you might say is, when we looked at the numbers, we had four different license holders, and I called them Farmer One and Farmer Two, because one was the old trace, and I'm sure Mr. Farmer would be here next time, and I would not at all be adverse to having Farmer One and Farmer Two merge into a single license, and I, you know, I think we should all support that, if that's what they want to do, avoid paying that money. But the money will go to pay the costs that we're going to incur for doing what we're going to be doing, as you will see shortly. Okay, one of the things that was in there, if you go to page two, transfer of a vacant license or the retirement of a license hauler must follow this process. They cannot be sold. You can sell your garbage truck, but you can't sell the license. The service director, the mayor, could come and say, I think we really need to create another license. Well, you know, have at it, do it, but it's just not something they can sell. And so it's sort of like the, dare I say it, the vending licenses, okay? So it's a similar process, different from the liquor license. And then J, we have to submit Ohio licenses, and we might even start to check those. K is dedicated to one of the big haulers, who puts their people into a very long contract, even though they only have a license for a year. How they do that, I don't know. I've had discussions with them at various points in time, and there's about a three-hour opportunity for them to get out of the license and try another hauler, and it's just not fair, so they may not require customers to enter into contract longer than allowed under the term of the license, is the bottom line. And it's no big penalty, it's just a way to kind of make sure you keep your customers. Others of the haulers do a really good job, and that's how they keep their customers, so, I mean, you don't have to have that. Okay, now, here's the big part. This is the part that's going to be new. Actually, it's not new, but we're recognizing it in the ordinance. What is going on right now, because the cardboard market is really good, is that some of the haulers are collecting cardboard and not taking it out to the recycling center, but instead are taking it over to the, to, I keep thinking Centerville, but that's not the right place. What's the name of the place? Where are they going with that cardboard? There's a transfer station that Rumke has.
One takes it to Canal Winchester.
Canal Winchester, okay, they're driving it there. We don't do it that way, but they take it there, and they're getting good money for it, and that's good, more power to them, another way to make money. And so what we're going to say is, so we like that idea, and we want you to continue doing it. So the license haulers that serve the city, largely with dumpsters, are going to be put in charge of collecting cardboard and getting it either at their benefit to Canal Winchester, to the transfer station, or perhaps they could take it to Athens County Recycling, it's up to them. They probably won't get the money at Athens County Recycling, but that would be the way to do it. And aluminum recyclables, if they choose, and this is the first plan, part of the plan. If necessary, the service safety director may include additional recyclable materials in the next round to add to the collection responsibility of the licensed hauler. I would assume by that point, there might be some additional devices, maybe drop places that would happen. Okay, so the big thing that we have not had, and we need right now, we're going to need for the future, is that we need to have a reporting procedure, and this is, should be done annually, and no more nice guy. I mean, we want this on time and in a reasonable fashion. What we want is, if they've changed their equipment, the wheels fall off a truck, we want the new license number, the new truck. We want the total volume of garbage that they did, that they collected, and what landfill destination they chose. Now, that may not seem important to you, but it is important to us because we're going to be adding, we hope, with the plan, a generation fee, and this is a way to check out and make sure that is happening in a timely fashion. The total recycling collection from the contracts that they collected from, the tons of cardboard collected, the destination of the material, the tons of aluminum collected, the destination of the material, and other materials as added. So that's kind of a simple thing, but it needs to be done. And then, I assume, the service safety director, or the assistant, or her destiny, will get that material to the solid waste, that information on materials collected to the solid waste district. And the annual report that the hauler makes to the city, and this would be, the second part, I would say, would be confidential, but it still should be, I mean, everything we generate is a public record, but I think especially the amount charged monthly, you know, you have a list of all the holders, you've got name, address, service method, dumpster, is it not? How frequently is the dumpster tipped? The amount charged monthly, and what recycling efforts are going on specifically, okay, so that's basically it. I know we had trouble getting information from people, and sometimes it seemed confusing. And so now, we'll go back and see what questions you have. Fundamentally, it's the same old licensing procedure with a few more additional things thrown on. Before I do that, though, I wanted to recall with you, I believe when I was talking to Roger Dale, the head of Athens County Recycling, he said that on Monday mornings, the garbage truck weighs three tons more with brown glass, and that's, you know, we have the brown glass problem in this town. It's our largest item, and it's not very recyclable. We're kind of giving a slow pitch, easy throw to the commercial haulers, letting them pick up cardboard. I mean, cardboard and amassed stuff isn't that valuable, but they can get 50 dollars or more a ton, and it's been as, three times that. If the economy picks up, it'll be more than that, so, and they can take it in a dumpster. And so they have a slow pitch, start to do it, they're doing it anyway, some of them, the ones that are smarter, doing it, so, maybe I shouldn't comment on their intelligence, they're really, the ones who are more tuned in to the economic situation. Okay, now, who has a question they want to mention, talk about, so on, so forth? As it stands, we're going to, we're going to see some changes with this, but not too many. Yes, Mayor Wile?
Part of the reason for us doing this, because we're both on the Policy Commission Committee, is that in the next five years, the next update of the strategy requires us to give percentages of how much recyclables are being generated versus the garbage being thrown to the landfill. This is the first step in gathering those numbers. There's always been a little bit of Lucy Goosey, I think is the term I've heard.
Lucey Gudzina.
Well, no, it's hard to get those numbers if we don't have an accurate run on them, feed on what we're actually generating in the commercial market in terms of recyclables. This is the first step in that process. Right now, how the strategy that's in place right now has to do with accessibility of recyclable, recycled transportation, transfer stations, and we're ahead of the game for the most part with our curb side, but that only covers mostly residential. So this is, it's good that we're putting this in, codifying this, so they have to go with it.
The only thing that I wish, I don't know if, and Patrick's gone, so I can't ask him, but I do wish that we had something in here that says, should we not have this, should this not work, should we lose, should things fall apart with Athens County, we have a way to get out of these licenses. Maybe a year isn't so bad, I don't know, but can we do it? You could probably terminate them, but.
When you say, should things change, are you talking about the splitting of the Athens and Hocking counties?
Yeah, who knows? I mean, you've been there, I've been there, it's anybody's guess what's going to happen.
That would probably be a long enough process, we'd see this.
We'd see this, okay. I'm glad for your confidence, because it'll be you guys that are doing it, but it just seemed for a while, and I think you shared this with, you shared this opinion, it was pretty frightening, wasn't it? That things were changing at a rapid rate, and what was going to happen to us, now they seem like they're, they're much more stable, and it could change next week or the week after, but there it is. I would like you all to understand that there is money in garbage, and there actually is enough money in recycling to support 12, 13, 15 people, mainly with ours and the university's recyclables, in garbage and recycling in this town. And we do have a lot of special things we ask of our hauler, and I don't think anybody understands that, except people who've been around town and watched. And I never, you know, the cleanup, spring cleanup, which is going to happen, which, you know, isn't something that you would mention without kind of thinking about it twice, how much that takes, and then the real spring cleanup when the students leave, even more so, clean up after events, yeah, so, I mean, it's not something that one guy or two guys in a, single guys in a truck are going to be able to handle, should that everything change, but that's just my opinion, yeah?
I just wanted to clarify that I was really responding to an overwhelming citizen's request, please allow me to continue to use my hauler, and as far as having reporting requirements on what is diverted from. And as far as having reporting requirements on what is diverted from the waste stream, that seems to be a no-brainer, so.
Hello?
Thanks. It looks like a lot of these changes are going to be really good for the contract. I have a couple of questions, and these are just sort of things to think about, I guess, before the final, or the more final draft.
We're going to start reading next week, I hope. She wants the first of May.
Okay.
Okay?
I don't have any, any big issues here, just a couple of things that jumped out at me. Limiting the number of licenses to four, there are four contractors right now.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah. And one of them is double. And so if they came and said, because one has a, remember, a very small...
Two could be merged.
Yeah, the two could be merged. They could say 5,000, it's up to them.
Right.
And you can decide, and we wouldn't necessarily have to. I mean, it's just a way to think about it a different way.
And so I think, I think that's good. I would hesitate to limit it too low, to, you know, one or two haulers, just because of competition.
Yeah. It'll be there eventually, though, and then they'll build back up. I mean, it's, it's, the same two, I won't mention who they are.
And then you mentioned a transfer of licenses, and maybe for this type of business, it's not as easy to get around this type of limitation as it would be for a vendor. But I know there was an issue with street vendors transferring licenses in the spirit, like, in everything except for the letter of the law. And I don't know if there's anything we could put in there to prohibit that, other than...
Think about the language you'd want. I'm open to it, because I...
We'd probably take an attorney's perspective to...
Well, maybe the vendors could tell you what to put in there, or the garbage. I don't know. I think that that is a problem, because when we went by it on the street tour, I said, "What happened?" And they said, "It's a long story."
You talking about the vendors, or you talking about garbage?
The vendors, the vendors, yeah.
That's a long story.
Yeah, I know. You don't want to talk about it now, I can imagine.
But just, if there's any way to prevent that from happening with these types of contracts, I don't know if there is.
I think they know now, except one of them, we had a change of administration and a new co-director, and he didn't know that counsel is supposed to advise and consent.
Okay.
I think, great, isn't that safe to say?
We're on vending licenses, I think.
I don't really, I don't read that situation, and my understanding is, yes, that they were, the director was following the letter of the law.
It says that they can't change hands without the advice and consent of counsel in the old law.
The license did not go, that's why this is on the other side of the street now.
I mean, they're both the same guy, but, all right.
Anyway, sorry to sidetrack.
No, I mean, I think that that is still an issue, because, well, first of all, they're only two big guys, two big outfits, and so it's all...
Yeah, realize, if it shifted, of course, you'd have to, they'd have to make some kind of declaration of a new incorporation, we have to assume. They have to probably change licenses on their trucks, which is part of this notification in here. So we would see, they see change in all of the, where the license of the trucks, the size of the trucks, and the name of the LLC, or whatever they are, right? Or the incorporation. So we could at that point say, "What happened?"
Depending on how crafty people were.
Yeah. So we'd hear about it, you know? And again, the argument, the counterargument, of course, is that you talk about a monopoly. The counterargument is having fewer trucks driving around, tearing up the streets.
Right. So definitely has to be a balance where we don't have too many different entities in the city driving the same routes.
Yes.
And having, having the choice where the price will be competitive.
Yeah, four trucks picking up four different commercial businesses.
On the same block, or whatever, yeah. One last thing was, I really like section K., where the customers won't be locked into an unfair contract for a lengthy period of time.
No, we have to enforce it.
And I was wondering if we might go to strengthen that a little bit by requiring the contractors to allow customers to negate their contract with a certain amount of notice to the hauler.
Could you ask the law director what we could do with that?
Yeah, I don't know if it's overstepping or not.
No, no, I think it's, it's a felt need. I mean, it's not as bad as it used to be, but it's still there.
I've heard about it as well.
You've heard about, yeah, so, and I bet everybody has one way or another.
And those are the only comments that I had on it.
Yes.
I think it's good to standardize the reporting on this.
Right, because we have to do more now. We have to do recycling. We are doing it, but we don't have a report on it. I mean, we aren't doing it, the haulers are doing it. But if the market skids, we still have to do it. They have to do it. They can take it to recycling center. I mean, it'll be done. I think that's, all you have to do is look around our adjacent counties to see what happens when the market goes sour. Things just don't get done.
Thank you, Member Bain. A couple of comments, and again, it's obvious that there's a lot going into this, which I appreciate. And to me, it's also accountability, as we work towards being green and more sustainable as a community. On a side note here, in section one, letter D., where it acknowledges the responsibility of the licensed hauler to see that the hauler's collections are conducted in a neat, workmanlike manner. That's interesting, because I was approached by a local landlord on Palmer Street, who acknowledged in his observations, he felt that the haulers were treating the residents there with less regard or respect than in other parts of the community. In his observations, this was a local landlord who had done some observations and data collection, photography, and had been concerned, correct, that perhaps his residents were being treated unfairly in the professionalism. So I don't know if that's, if that's something to be addressed in the contract aspect, when they're signing the papers as well, if it's an issue that needs to come up?
They should contact my office if they feel that there's been an issue, and we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
I think that if, and I actually intended to go out with my camera this morning, because along the street were improperly stored garbage containers.
And that I don't doubt, yeah, that I don't doubt either.
And I, you know, and then after the garbage truck has passed, I mean, some of the broke open, broken open bags and other things that just happened because it's raining, or because of the war, or whatever, they're all over the street, you know? And most of the litter, that's what I've been saying to the Westsiders. A lot of that litter comes from improperly stored garbage, and you can lay it right back at the landlords who don't have proper containers. And I would love right now to go buy standardized containers. Not myself, thank you, but, you know, with the garbage fees, but, you know, I don't know that we can do it, but maybe you ought to look at that as an option. I think there was some concern that that would encourage too much throwing and not enough recycling, but there was one pile that was just amazing. There was one little bitty, small gray plastic can, but there were bags all over it, and there was all kinds of litter, potential litter and actual litter moving away from them. And with that wind that we had, if it was before the garbage happened, I mean, I guess, since I could tell you who, I knew who it was, and, I mean, we've heard it before, maybe the service director can hear it again, but...
And it may be an old issue, it may be, it may have passed, I don't know.
Well, I think it's a perennial issue. And, you know, she can slap Roger Dale's hands, say, "Get going, pick it up," but maybe, but I think that some, there's a level of irresponsibility on the part of some of the landlords as well. And, you know, being a landlord myself, I do have two trashcans for my two places, and they are forty to the, I mean, they have tight-fitting lids, they're supposed to be, you're not supposed to have garbage outside. I mean, it's a no-brainer there either, but yet this garbage pile is there on garbage day. And you've all seen it, so you know it. And, you know, we've tried social pressure, it doesn't seem to work so much. If it's any consolation, I think it's better than it used to be. But it can get a bit better. My opinion, it's better. And I saw the solid waste guy on Mill Street, and I went, yay!
It's been working a little bit over a week now.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilmember Bain, I, we do have a finance and personnel committee meeting, but I had some items that I'd like to be able to do that are miscellaneous on our city services.
Oh, could I start with mine? Mine is small.
Yes.
But I passed them something that came up. We've been working a little bit, you know, our insurance changes start on the first of September, I think. And anyway, we were, my question was about Caremark, our vendor of, of medicine, pills, drugs, what else? So I asked Debbie, and I've had this aha experience about it, and so I thought I'd share that with you and see if you share the strategy with me. Kathy, you can look up. It's so well done. I was, I made some cookies and stuff, actually doing, wiping this out, I have to admit it. Had to do it, had to do it. Anyway, so drugs, drugs. What we are paying, what we are asking our people to pay. And one thing you would notice, this is city, county, and OU. And in the process of doing this, I had heard from the auditor's office that we were having a hard time getting information out of Caremark, our vendor. I had Caremark myself, maybe with STRS. And then I have, now I have Express Scripps, and, you know, they're kind of the same in a way. So I couldn't understand what was going on, but I had this aha experience on Friday afternoon, thanks to our clerk, as usual. Okay, so the city drug program has going across, we asked our non-union people to pay $5 for generic, $20 for retail brand name, and a non-formulary, and I, 40. And then money order, 10, 20, and 40.
And these are refills?
Yes.
She means ninety days, is that what?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, you look down on this, and you say, "You know what? There's no difference between us and OU, and there's no difference between us and county." And yet, people who are studying it, like I've been working a little bit with Ray Hazlitt, and it seems like our drug prices are really high. And I don't think it's anything other than the one thing that we're going to do. And in fact, the new outgoing personnel director suggested that we have the incoming personnel director do compare and contrast. But actually, it could be even simpler than that, because when Greg Fialco sent back his note to Debbie, he said, "There's something called the RX High Ohio Collaborative for seven, for X number of dollars, you know, two bubble gum wrappers and fifty, I don't know what it takes, but it takes something, and they will get us a better price." You know, so we're clearly getting money from our, from our people, but they're not getting us the best price. And so we're, you know, with a little bit of encouragement on your part, we can ask our new personnel director, as the outgoing one mentioned, she could do this, take a look into the RX Ohio Collaborative. There's also a second one that Ray Hazlitt gave me about two months ago, where $750, in this case, you belong to a consortium, and it's something like managed care, where you get a reduced price or a fixed price, because you belong to a group. And so we could continue with Caremark. And so I would, you know, I'm going to write her a quick note and ask if she'd explore that and get back to us. But the problem is, and the reason we wanted to bring it up tonight, is we don't have much time between now and first of September, right? And so there would be nothing happening on this side, on the worker side, but the happening would happen as we get involved with somebody that would help Caremark give us a better price on the drugs. Possible? Probable?
Possible, but it's an even shorter time span, according to the auditor. August 1st is our...
Oh, I said September, didn't I? That's why, I knew there was an urgency, I got my days mixed up. So there it is. So can we, can we, go ahead, and I'm going to give, is it okay to pass the new person that pile of stuff? It was encouraged by the old personnel director, saying, "Find out what, if Greg Fialco's approach can help us, we won't have to raise any rates, and we may have savings." Because right now, drug costs are getting close, if I look, if I remember correctly from the numbers, which we'll look at in a couple of weeks, about 40% of the total major medical part. I mean, so it's a lot, but we have a system that's fairly efficient, and we're self-insured, remember, and we have to buy stop-loss stuff. But anyway, there it is. All right, let's see what you have to ask. If it's money, we don't have any.
I got that. And I know that we've been under a soft hiring freeze, but we are having an early retirement in our utility billing office. This is funded through proprietary funds, water, sewer, trash, so that posting will go out, in terms of filling that vacancy.
And at your request, I will pay us...
I was advised today that there may be some additional issues related to it. It is a civil service position, so I'm going to look into that this week.
Well, you know what you could do is go back to when I was first on council, back 100 years, and what you will find is that we used to have actually career paths mapped out, where a person could go from this position to that. Do you remember that faintly, Kathy? You know, so in other words, you should be able to post it internally, because they were doing it before, and I don't think we disbanded the civil service.
I will work with the clerk, I'm trying to...
Do you remember that? The paths?
I'm not sure they're classified.
You don't think so?
Yeah.
They were not civil service?
But either way, I need to fill that.
Did you lead me astray on this?
It's more than two, it is indeed a two-person job. I didn't hear you, sorry.
I said, "Did you lead me astray on this?" I mean, I think...
I didn't know, I'm, I'm just...
I think posting it internally is a very good idea.
I do, too.
They do it at OU.
But the issue may be related to what civil service testing the individual might have taken for the position that they're in. So it gets a little bit complicated.
If they're leaving the position, what difference does that make?
Well, if somebody from the street crew or someplace like that...
I'll look into that, and it's not something...
But we're talking about the non-union only. It would only be the non-union, would not be the bargaining units at all.
So...
There should be some way for upward mobility for eager people.
I agree. So we're going to work towards that.
And so would you, anybody be adverse if we could put that change into the ordinance? They'll say it's possible? Okay. Well, the change would be that you would post a position internally. It's a benefit the union that people have. Why wouldn't it? I know that OU, when you have...
So you're saying, post internally first?
Yeah.
As an option.
And the county does that, and that's, that's where, you know, this is really the first place I've ever encountered that does it, do that.
So maybe we can transition to that, then. I mean, because you would want that to be an option, where people can move up, higher level.
Yeah.
Two examples, both for civil service. Okay.
We have a contract with the Washington County Jail. They never required a contract in the past. This is for, in case we need an overflow bed, as it were, and it's just now been submitted to the law director's office today for review, and it would require a resolution. We only use them when we can, it's the same rate per day, some students per day. They're now requiring an actual contract, and they require a resolution.
Okay, but it's 100 miles. Wrong trip.
We try not to do that, but when the jail gets full, which it could...
Is there, I mean, is this for people who need to just get sober, or?
No.
No.
This is for people actually, yes. Pardon me for the crassness of the question, okay?
The community center, we're going, you're going to see in appropriations coming forward, that we are looking at the funds closely, whether or not we have the paving for the community center parking lot, which is part of the citywide paving. The money may be appropriated, but it may need to be authorized, we're going to look at that. There's also some question on some of their operational funds, if they're going to need some movement within that in order to operate, for example, the pool this summer. And the Northwest Bike Whisper, you'll see some changes in that. That's the one that you saw on the, on the road trip there, over the old railroad bridge. But there were some design and engineering that had occurred previously, that we're just, we're working with the auditor's office to clean up that project in dollar amounts. We'll be requesting $15,000 there for the paint program, again, to offer that this year, and that'll be included in the upcoming appropriation ordinance. I may indeed...
Comes out at 250.
Pardon me?
Comes out at 250.
Comes enhancement.
So going around campaign, I've seen a lot of houses, several houses that may be able to take advantage of that. I'm wondering if, in the past, the city has actually actively recruited participants, or that's something we could possibly do.
Usually what occurs there is code, that actually does the initial advertisement of soliciting. We have income guidelines, and it has to be homeownership, so you can see where there are constraints on that, so...
Sure.
Yeah, there are opportunities there. There's a, there's a small number, again, we're largely rental, and then there's a, there's a number that really don't want to deal with, you know, government whatsoever, so it's always that quandary. But it was, it's been in place for, since Dale Tankey put it together, ten years ago.
Exactly what I was gonna say, and Dale used to really stir the pot and go out and, you know, it was like a supplement to the code, so you wanna take that on? Do it.
Last year, we didn't do any, the year before, we did two. And usually, we could fit in maybe about three houses, three, uh, five thousand apiece, I think. Two years ago, I think one came in low, about three, and the other one came in high, around eight. So, and again, last year, I, it didn't seem to be a lot of push out there to do it, and I'm not sure why. Usually, again, it leaves up the code, 'cause they're out there seeing the stuff. But for some reason, nothing came, came through.
We did have a request from the members that attend to finance and personnel to do a better outreach, so we plan to do that. There may be a possible 2010 bill, I'm still working on that, that's related to electricity, and I know we're already to April, but there was some delay, so that would be included in the future appropriations ordinance. And lastly, under City Services, get ready, and this is the outreach program that we've worked with Ohio University, a collaborative effort, City of Athens, Ohio University, on what happens in Athens stays on Facebook, YouTube. Basically, it's for this upcoming high event season, telling them to be smart, be civil, be safe. And then we have another that actually has the list of the different, last year, in just four spring weekends, there were like three hundred Ohio University students were disciplined by university judiciaries as a result of illegal behavior. Forty-two of them were either suspended or are no longer here. Don't put your future in jeopardy. You're gonna tell us some be smart, be civil, and be safe points. It's not quite finalized, but this will be coming out this week because we have an event that someone's decided to schedule for Saturday, so I just wanted you to be aware that these will be out. But it's been good, good hard work and collaborative effort between the city and the university to try to get the message out to them.
Many meetings, which I don't have to go to, she does. Anything else? Thank you.
Yes, better you than me. So I'm adjourned. To get all those planning, or the, any personnel, please?
All right, we can get started with the Planning and Development Committee. Our first order of business is an annexation petition for Cook Drive. This has been kind of in the pot for a while, and I would like to have Mark Spezza and Diane Spezza come up and introduce it. Let me briefly outline, this is where they talk mostly about city services. The annexation first has to go before the county commissioners, which is May tenth, May tenth or May eleventh. And they need to have the, the agreement with the city for services, for public works and engineering services, public water, utilities, those sort of things, before the county commissioners can look at it. So that's what we're going to be talking about today. The rest of the annexation process will occur after the county commissioners and such. So it's kind of a long, multi-step process, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mark, this is Diane, we, we'd like to thank you for hearing our petition today. I actually have several copies, I don't know if council has seen it, if you'd like, I can drop those off. Do you have them?
I, I put out some copies, I didn't make a zillion, but.
I've got four, but.
I also made a copy and put in, Debbie made a copy, of the report from Andy Stone about the services that would be required, and what potentially would be required from this, from the city.
Okay. Yeah, wanna thank you for the time here. What we're looking to do is annex thirty acres, and the property would be accessed off of Hope Drive. For you who may not know where Hope Drive is, it's off of East State Street, and it's where Athens Metropolitan Housing is located. This property is approximately seven hundred feet beyond Hope Drive. After talking with Andy Stone and several people in the city, it's been determined that there is manhole access at the end of Hope Drive. So again, manhole, it would be about seven hundred feet, seven hundred fifty feet from where this property is. And I think what we're hoping to do here is at least get the process started with City Council, and as Christine said, we'd like a letter from City Hall Point indicating that the city can provide services to this location. And we're really here to just kind of answer questions for this City Council, if you have some of the maps and really know a little bit about the project.
Andy Stone wrote a, a letter indicating, it has all the miscellaneous public works, sort of, public water, public sewer, storm sewer, drainage, road maintenance. Requirements on it, kind of a general outline of what would be required for the development that is, is planned potentially for this piece of property, as, as I think needs to be put in ordinance, because we, we've had problems in the past with bonds and such, specifically who needs, who will be required for development costs from, from the last point of city services to the point of development. And as, as Andy Stone wrote, all prospective extension of public infrastructure will be reviewed and overseen by the engineer and public works department, and a development bond will be required to ensure proper construction. And he will indicate how much, what he feels is a proper bond amount. And I think that needs to be placed in the ordinance because of prior problems that the city has had with oversight on those things. I think that generally, what Andy provided seems, you know, straightforward. The fire and police review is still being conducted, we should have that before, first reading should occur on Monday.
Could you give, give me a ballpark figure on roughly how much Andy thinks the cost would be for the water sewer, storm sewer and streets?
He didn't give me that, did he?
Do you have any idea?
We, we have no idea of that yet. We're only, probably stages here.
It's downhill, a lot of it, but I just wondered what, if it was, it seems like it could be quite a substantial amount of money.
Sure will be dependent upon what the, the use with the proposed development.
And again, maybe I should clarify that, we're requesting that the property be annexed in as R3 housing. We're talking to a number of affordable housing developers, and again, we're hoping that through our efforts, we can attract a fairly prominent developer. One of the other aspects of what we're looking for is we're, and again, we can't determine this, this is purely up to the developer, but we're hoping that we can get some development into this particular property that would have consideration for US veteran priority housing. Again, this is just our desire, but essentially, we've put it out to probably about twenty different affordable housing developers, we've been in touch with three of them, and plus, there's a, a couple of local developers that have also had some discussions going
Now, there's a couple of issues that have come up repeatedly with this annexation process. First of all, is that the access that you have for this, all this infrastructure is not on your property. And I think before we, you have indicated that you are in negotiation with the owner of this property to get access.
That's correct.
Probably before we see any annexation process, we're gonna need some kind of indication that that is, is correct, because we don't want to have to get into the whole issue of going over, you know, other people's property and all that.
Building an expensive road, isn't it?
Yes, so that would be something that, and I'm sure probably the county commissioners are gonna be happy to see something like that, too. Now, before, when this, when this annexation process first came to the city, when it was initially discussed, it was, you wanna annex part of the property.
Yes.
And that's an unusual request. Usually, a whole property is annexed into the city. What you're requesting right now is to leave a, a section of unannexed piece of property that's basically surrounded by annexed, and quite frankly, from a planning point of view, having properties that are islands like that, of surrounded by annexed land, is problematic. And we have discussed this in the meetings that we had with Paula, Paul, Paula, all the Pauls. About this process, I think that, that we need to see movement on the zoning for the second part. And I understand, you know, you have one permit application going through, but we need to see the second application permit going through to, to be able to feel comfortable about this whole process because of that island and the whole issue of that.
Actually, to answer that, we did meet with the Canadian Township Trustees last week, and we presented the concern that we felt the city might have over this issue. Initially, what I was trying to do was, I guess, kind of create the best of both worlds for the city and the township, and was trying to keep some of the tax base still in the township so that their hit wouldn't be as big. But at the meeting, I did discuss the fact that there's probably a strong possibility that the city would require this to occur because of this island effect. So, you know, again, this has been at least presented to them, and we kind of wanted to get the city's input here, but we kind of felt like we would probably end up having to start that process as well. That particular thirty, thirty acre parcel would probably be annexed in as green space, again, based on the topography of the property and the elevations we start getting into there. So although that was our kind of interest and desire to begin with, we do understand that, you know, this would kind of be creating an island that is outside the city, remember?
Well, and, and it creates a problem in the future, because if that piece of property is subdivided and sold off, then the city has no real control over it. I think that that's an issue when the whole property is surrounded by city. I mean, it's kind of, they get all the benefit of, you know, being annexed without, you know, some of the, the control that the city would have on certain types of use for that piece of property. As, as to the zoning of this piece of property, that will have to be determined by the Planning Commission when it goes through in its annexation process. This zoning, not the zoning, the Planning Commission, sorry. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation of the zoning, but, you know, I don't, I don't foresee a huge discussion on, on the request for that, I don't see it. So I think that the biggest issue is that application process for the second piece needs to start going forward.
I would like to address one other issue that you did bring up, and that is the adjacent property that you have access to. And I have, I did make a couple of additional copies of letters that I can share with the City Council if you think that's appropriate. The letter is from Brent Hayes, and he's put forth a couple of different options for that to happen. And again, one would be an easement through his property, and the other would be, the other option would be purchase the property. And right now, we're probably leaning toward option B. So if, if you would like, I can share that letter with you, I don't know if you have a copy of it or not.
Is that what you, that's what you emailed? I received that via email, okay.
I think though, before everything is finalized, we would have to see some kind of legally binding agreement, whether it's purchase or, purchase of easement or whatever. That meets the legal specifications that our Law Director requires of it and such, because that's another, can be potentially a very sticky issue for us, accessing, you know, infrastructure over, you know, we've had problems like that before and such. Yes. We just wanna protect, we need to protect the, the city services and the taxpayers of the city when we do these annexations, because otherwise, they can get to be rather problematic, as we have seen in certain instances. So we try to learn from past experiences, experiences. So, questions from council?
I'd like to reiterate that there is no open spa, there is no zoning outside of the City of Athens, so in order to accomplish what you've got on the map, we'll have to see it annexed. I know Chris has already said that, but the second annexation, you could really speed that one up in that new speedy process, couldn't you?
Yeah.
And I think that's, I think that's actually the process we took, the general annexation, and we would probably get that paperwork started fairly soon.
And then also, of course, the control of the pathway. One thing that concerns me a little bit, and I'm just gonna say, oh, I haven't checked yet, I'm not gonna start now, but we're traversing a property with infrastructure, and you're a developer, or you are going to pay for it, and I guess I wonder what the interaction will be between the person you're buying property from and your infrastructure. I mean, because you'll have a water line and a sewer line going through there, and, you know, potentially for the future. Given that, any thought?
I'm, I'm not sure if I need to.
I think it's in, I think it's in your letter, one of the, one of the conditions in the letter for the.
That's if it's an easement.
No, I wasn't even talking about that, I'm just saying that we have a very canny businessman who's going to be giving you, no, 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 not give you, sell you, somehow use, you're going to use this land, but you're gonna have a sewer line going through that pathway. Have you talked to him about?
Or is it being improvement?
He's, he's aware, and I think that. I would like to actually have this on record, that I think that Mr. Hayes has been extremely generous in his offer on the property, and in fact, I believe the approach that we're looking at and talking to him about, he's, I feel we have a hundred percent of his backing, I think. He really has made us a pretty generous offer, that, that's why we're really taking a look at the option B. I think it's, I don't think there's any question that, under option A here, that no one can guarantee that property taxes are not gonna go up on adjacent properties once infrastructure goes in, but I, I kind of feel like we have right now a good working relationship with Brent, we're gonna be hammering out an agreement on this, and hopefully we'll have something in place fairly soon for City Council to look at.
I think also with whatever, because this facilities, the infrastructure is going through a relatively undeveloped piece of property, it should be recognized that the potential for development. That's, it's an R2 right now?
It is, it is R2. And there's no question that, you know, again, there will be potential for development on there, and that may all be part of the mix in terms of any developer coming in, that that developer would ultimately own that property.
So, I mean, that has to be recognized. Mr. Stone has probably looked at this with, with, in his review of the development infrastructure that needs to be put in. I mean, he does all these formulas, and I'm not gonna worry about what. So, and same with, with fire and police. I mean, we have issues before where people have not known what they wanted to do on, on potentially annex city, and that proposes, you know, that could pose a problem, because if you have huge amounts of development, that can overwhelm. But this area is fairly well serviced, I think, because of the apartments that are already there and such, so.
And I would like, because again, I don't know how much people know about the property that we would be gaining access through. The seventeen acres is zone R2, and the city does have an easement through that property, that's, it's a whole road that takes the city workers, et cetera, up to the reservoir. So there is a shared easement there to begin with.
And that needs to be identified in any legal documents that are produced out of, out of whatever, purchase or easement documentation that you produce with, with Mr. Hayes.
Does the easement will continue, yes?
Yes, but it needs just to be identified, so that, that there's no. But it needs just to be identified, so that there's no question or anything.
I would assume that, I would assume that easement, it is in his deed, again, you know, it would pass with the sale of the property, so.
Right. But it's always good to identify them.
Yeah.
So, any other questions from council?
Yeah, just quickly, I'd actually like to see the property in person if possible.
Sure.
So maybe you can contact our, contact Debbie and ask if there might be a time you can offer to give a tour if we're interested.
It's a little soggy around there.
We'd be happy to. The hall road is really in need of a little work right now. I can drive my four-wheel drive vehicle across it, but there, it's really the only way to get in there right now.
Tell you what, I'll contact you and if anybody else is interested.
We'd be happy to do a personal tour. Hopefully if we get, in the spring of days where it starts raining, it will be a somewhat easier show.
Athens in the spring, but yeah.
It's not really, it'll be hotter than places. It's proposed tomorrow.
Okay, so really, the next step is for council to tell them what services that come with annexation.
Right.
And you want the condition of the rest of the parcel being annexed in.
Right. So we will introduce the ordinance next Monday. I know that you would, we will probably have to have a special session or?
We will.
We will. Well.
The city's for commercial garbage anyway.
Okay, we'll have a special session. This will be put on any special session, so it will be read for three times before the county commission public, I think that Lenny LeLiasen said that it's a public hearing on the.
They set a public hearing for May 10.
They have to have it 20 days before.
Yes.
20 days before. I'm going to use this patchwork.
It's really nice.
They're going to have to put an emergency clause.
But it's not the, it's just the public, it's not for the annexation itself, it's just for the, this is more of what the commissioners need in order to have their hearing, it's not the annexation itself.
She's done this before.
She has done this before. What's 20 days, what's your magic?
So it's a statement in the county what services.
So it's 20 days before the.
I don't either. Do we have any tools?
You have a calendar, what are you talking about?
If you read it on the 18th for the first time, and then the second would be May 2nd, and you'd need the emergency clause suspension, all that, in order to hit May 10.
In order to meet your deadline on commercial garbage, they will have to have a special session.
We will read it next Monday, for sure. And we will put on emergency clause. That's okay with the mayor, since.
And we'll probably get started with the annexation of the other piece and further discussions with Brent Hayes.
Yes. I think that the council will feel much more comfortable if that annexation process had already been started when we started reading this, from the discussion that we've had. Any other questions? Okay. I have no miscellaneous. Does anybody have miscellaneous?
Just one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one miscellaneous, nothing to, you know, we passed a resolution to recommend some language for Internet Cafe, it should be coming at you sooner than later.
Okay. Great.
Just so you know, the planning commission, City Planning Commission.
Great. I'd love to see that. The other thing is, when is the spring cleanup? That's kind of planning and development.
Spring and development. Last week in April is spring cleanup, 25th to 29th, and then the 30th is the hazardous waste pickup for.
That's planning, plan ahead to get rid of your garbage.
And dedication day, of course, is the 16th, next Saturday.
Next Saturday. Great.
I'm sorry, that's this Saturday, Mayor.
This Saturday. That's the next one, isn't it?
Yes. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate your time.
Thank you. That's the end of the Planning and Development Committee.
Transportation?
Thank you. Now we have the Transportation Committee, and we have three items tonight to discuss, the first one of which I'd like to show you several photos. This is just for preliminary discussion at this point, to alert council members if you can.
Oh, it's going on TV?
It should be coming at the TV. This is the 1996 Ford, it's a salt truck. It is used all year, it's used for dirt as well as salt, and we do have, I think, a few photos showing the condition of it. It has rusted, the front of the bed is in bad situation, the underside has no guard left on the drag chain. These are some of the comments that Street Director Stone made to us the other day to alert us to this. We do need to at least be thinking about it, beginning discussions, looking at, to the city budget to see if we have money available to be able to work towards the purchase of this. The salt truck is obviously used during the winter time. The problem is, is that the orders for such trucks need to go in months ahead of time, so that's why we'd like to begin some of the discussions now. So.
And Andy does not have money in his funds.
Uh, no, that's why we need to work with the auditor's office to identify this and to see what might be possible yet this year, and work with the Service Safety Director with further discussions. Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember?
Did you mention the price? Did I just miss that?
You missed the price.
$115,000 to $120,000.
I thought it was 50.
No, it's a lot of money, so.
Either way, this vehicle will be removed from service, it is no longer safe and cannot continue to function.
Okay, that's the clarification I was looking for as well. I wasn't sure if there were engine issues, or if there's anything that could be fixed or replaced to keep it on the road. I'm rather thrifty, so if we can fix something rather than replace it, I always prefer that.
I believe it has extended its useful life.
15 years. Councilmember Gosling, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if the city's up into a used one, if there are used available, although salt trucks get a lot of intense use, so I don't know if that would be best, but just to explore in case finances restrict what we can afford.
That's a good suggestion. I appreciate that. Okay.
I was going to, I was going to say to Alahu that Nation Cities had an article about a garbage truck that used hybrid technology that was better than a regular hydraulic truck. So I'm not suggesting we have to get a green one this time, but I think that that whole thing is changing, we need to see more of that. I'll send you that article, it's pretty interesting, I sent it to Andy.
Okay. The second item is to alert you that we will have disposal of some city vehicles that are no longer, like the salt truck, no longer usable by the city, and we'll be bringing forth an ordinance and that will describe those vehicles, and they may likely be from several departments.
And some are already listed, right?
Yes.
Because of the police work on that.
Yeah, pounds, yeah.
Yeah, they're already done, I think.
On the vehicles, will we again be, have the option of giving these to local, other local governments that may need them? Is that something that?
Actually, we talked about that with the bus systems, but I have yet to do it, and most of the time, really part of the question I have there is, the fact is I had to go get money from you guys last year for bus systems, so I have kind of gotten reluctant to just give them away. I still have that open if somebody, I'm in conversation with Lance Rep, the Mobility Coordinator for the county, there's always been an ongoing discussion trying to extend services out to the outside of the city limits. We know we can't do that, we don't have the resources to do that, but if somebody would say, if there was an organization, I would say, we can pick up and do that. I would entertain that concept of using a bus as for that. Other than that, and that's the only reason why we haven't put them up to auction, we're talking about doing sealed bids otherwise.
Sure.
But there's not a lot of dollars in there, but at the same time, every little bit helps, considering we had to run to you guys for 100,000 last year. I mean, up till last year, when we, last November 17th, when I said that we need more money, I was probably willing to trade it off, but at this point, I'm a little bit more reluctant.
But we did do a police car, right, to all the?
Yes, we did.
Still some.
Very happy with it, I think.
Right. So thanks that we can't get much money for, in another way, yes, I think we should still be open to it.
And there was savings, because they didn't have to decommission it, which was sort of a win.
Well, thanks for the suggestion on that. Okay. The third item that I have under miscellaneous concerns the Carriage Hill Bridge, and we've described this at other committee meetings, but we're now ready, we will be moving forward with some of the construction costs for this project. It's approximately $200,000 total. The work will be completed this summer, over one, possibly two days, as Director Stone reported on our street tour. And you might also remember that the costs that the city will incur for this project, we will be able to use as cost share on our Oxbow, repair the Oxbow Bridge, it's also, that it will occur in subsequent year.
Again, this is just another improvement on that, which in a corridor, so we're working our way down the street.
Right.
And up the street at least.
Any other miscellaneous items for transportation?
No.
Thank you.
The ladder truck is on the Safety Services Committee agenda tonight. There's been a delay in going forward with the purchase of the ladder truck for a couple of reasons. One is that we've been waiting for a response from Ohio University on our request that they contribute toward the purchase of the ladder truck. I did check with President McDavid's office, and was told that they are still in the process of gathering budget information. And so hopefully we will get good news from them, if you're an optimist. The other reason is that it's just a real tough decision to go forward with this major purchase in our financial uncertainty. However, we have, I think we have a responsibility for the safety of our citizens, and I think we do need to go forward now. And it's my understanding that if we don't take some action in April, that we lose the 2010 pricing. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, actually, something is, the price quote we've received has been held for about a year and a half. They had increases already in January, and we're still, so they've asked either movement by the end of April, 1st of May, or we do, we no longer hold that quote, and it's beyond the 60 days of which they already.
So we've been pretty lucky that they've been willing.
They've been considerate in that sense.
They've been very considerate, right. We've talked about several ways of doing the financing. There is a council member who has mentioned to me several times that he thinks we should just borrow. The cost is $1.3 million.
It's down, it's one million.
I think it's 1.05.
It's 1,300,000.
Yes, it's down.
What's the? 300,000, 1.03.
1.03, right. That's what I meant to say.
And they can afford 40, right.
And they can afford the 30,000, right, exactly.
Little difference.
That's, that's the back deal.
Yes, probably.
If we're lucky.
And so that is, has been his recommendation all along, that we, that we borrow the million and use the money, keep the money that we've set aside for payments and toward that obligation and that sort of thing. So I would like to go forward with an ordinance on Monday, and so I just, I was sort of hoping the auditor would be here to, I know that we can get a terrific interest rate.
And we'll have to borrow it every year.
And while, yes, right.
Well, okay.
If the economy improves, and if we get some help from Ohio University.
I spoke with auditor in the hallway, and she indicated we'd work this week towards seeing what, some options and discussions with her office to see what may be the best scenario for proceedings.
Are there any questions?
Do we know exactly how the budget is looking from the state level?
I know that they put the budget out, but it's so convoluted that it's difficult to.
There's a referendum, too.
Right. I mean.
When in our conversations with the auditor, and I think she shared with you, she, they actually built in a greater cut that did not occur this year. Will we survive 2011? Looks like it. With much money? No. It's 2012 in the future, that's some serious, serious.
Because there's.
Considerations have to be given in terms of.
The state tax was going up for vote this week and.
It's going to be gone.
And eradication is, that's not, that's not going to slow down, I mean.
Right.
And then the local 25, the other 25% cut for local funds, and then it, was it tangible personal property tax?
I know that the school districts have been rather hammered, and they haven't been able to figure out exactly how hard the hit was going to be, because they said that the, trying to read the budget was so difficult, and I'm wondering if it's more straightforward with, or whether it's on six different, you know, Excel spreadsheets like it is for the school districts.
I guess I would defer to the auditor's office for that.
I did ask a question this afternoon about the budget and the local, or the cuts of our local funds, and the auditor's office, as I understand it, has taken a more conservative approach, and so they took the, you know, we're going to anticipate this much in cuts, and they're, at this point, likely to get less. It doesn't mean it can't be adjusted later on in the year, but they have been fairly conservative about it.
Mixture is more of an issue, it's just, you know, kind of putting so much of our financial eggs in a basket, I guess is, is a question of whether that 600,000 is going to be more useful to us as an emergency, you know, kind of buffer and go.
And go ahead with the.
Go ahead with the borrowing.
Borrowing.
Because, I mean, as she said with, you know, you can't borrow for retirement, but you can borrow to go to school. So there's certain things you can borrow for and certain things you can't, so.
Nancy?
I'm pretty fiscally conservative, but I think, when you think about our obligations to the people who the fire department serves in multi-story buildings, we don't seem to have a bunch of chances. We could save our old fire truck, which is kind of rickety, we could just park and only call it in when we need it, but what if we need it and it's not there?
And it's not there, right.
And it just seems to me that, and I wish Ohio University were more forthcoming with the money, since most of the, of the property is there. I just, as a parent of children, I can't see not having that option. I mean, if we parked it and said, we're only bringing it out when we need it, we can eke five more years out of it, I'm afraid something awful will happen, and that's the part that worries me a lot. And a million dollars is a lot of money, but the way, it's more money than I have, but the way it's, the way it's set up with the bank and our local bank is so good to us, where it will allow us to, I mean, we could pay virtually the interest and a little bit on the principal. We did that with the Oak Street, or Oakmont Station, and we could then come back and pay a bigger amount if things get better, yippee, and, you know, get, do it that way. I just don't know what, I'd rather have, take our 640, because I know it'll disappear, and the universities to share, as I see it, and pay for it outright, but it's not probably going to happen. But I still want to do it because of the obligation we have to the less protected people.
The safety issue?
The safety issue.
Thank you.
Looks like the mayor has a comment. We can go either way.
I too believe that we need to move forward, and if anyone from the university wants to do some extra reading, too, I believe it was Alex Stuckey from The Post who did a wonderful job, and it was a big article, and she did a lot of extra research and contacting various universities that have supported similar situations, supported the purchase of trucks. And again, the discussion is always that they recognize there's a benefit, there's a symbiotic relationship between the community, the university and the city, and that it behooves and benefits everyone. And in addition to the community members that we want to make sure that we're providing safety to as well as our city workers and our fire officers, so that too is huge and essential to make sure that they're well-equipped and that they're prepared to do their job in the safest manner possible. So I definitely support, I know that we've been patiently waiting to hear, and we're working on things, and it may just be time that we get locked in with this purchase and take care of business.
Sure. My concern is that the university is going to say, oh, well, they've already gone forward with this, and that now they are kind of let off the hook of responsibility, and I would really like to see, you know, part of it, especially because a lot of the other funding that, you know, we've been talking about putting however much money towards Palmer Fest and all those other kind of free rider fees that the university is actually getting from the taxpayers of the city. And so I, you know, this doesn't mean that the university is getting let off the hook, but.
Exactly. And we have been waiting for a response from them, and we will be happy to accept their contribution anytime.
Definitely. And convo, the convo could even be there, right?
Exactly, exactly. So this, this purchase will benefit everybody.
The sports party, yes.
Yes, the sports party. Yes. So.
I'm really stretching it.
Yeah, this is absolutely a necessary purchase in my mind, as others have said. You know, being that we have saved some money for it, my personal preference would be to see at least some form of down payment on that, so that we're not just kicking it down the road.
Me, too.
If, if the budget does get somewhat better, I don't think it's going to be a huge improvement, and our costs are going to continue to rise regardless as a city.
True.
And so my preference would be to see some of that money go towards the initial purchase of it.
I agree.
Mayor, did you have a comment?
I would say move forward with it. The fact is, if we lose the quote, we'll probably go up another $50,000 to $60,000. If we take our loan for a full million, and we're talking about, right now, our rates are what, 1% coming from the bank? That's $10,000, so we'd save ourselves just by starting it over. We still have the 60, 650, 640 in reserve, if need be, to cover, and as you say, to pay it off early if need be, or most of it off early and reduce that, depending what the university does. But we also have some emergency funds in case something else happens.
Right.
So, and you're right, it is a, there's a safety issue here.
Yes, right.
In any scenario we're looking at, we're looking at borrowing. Even if the university were to agree that $50,000 per year, we don't have the full million.
Right. So we were going to have to borrow regardless of what, of what happened with the university.
And what Debbie put in the minutes, that we understand that they're going to postpone the request for purchasing pumper trucks? Remember, the chief and?
Yes.
What's his name?
Captain Gilchrist.
Captain Gilchrist both talked about how you could move that forward. And so, I mean, it'll, it'll be easy to forget in a couple of years when that nice red shiny truck is there, but just remind them, we're not going to buy a new pumper truck right away, because they are pricey also.
Yes. All right.[1781.13]